Well, let's get the meeting started before we call the meeting to order. Tom, do you want to read for the procedures?
Yes, sir. First, this is a remote meeting that is being held tonight. The city has determined that it is not practical or prudent to conduct an in-person city council meeting due to local state of emergency and social distancing guidelines. Accordingly, this meeting will be an electronic meeting conducted under Minnesota State Statute, Section thirteen D point zero two one. To the extent practical, members of the public may attend the meeting by utilizing the published link and calling information. Now, since this is a virtual meeting, we do have protocols to make the meeting run more efficiently. One, the host will keep all participants muted until public comment is requested or public hearing is opened. And we'd ask that you keep yourselves unmuted until that time, please. The council will not be muted so that they can talk freely amongst themselves. The host will specifically solicit question or comments from the public at various points during each item where we're expecting to receive comments. So please hold questions and comments until public feedback is requested either from myself or the mayor. If you wish to speak, you can raise your hand virtually. Staff will individualize individually recognize those wishing to speak and will invite you to speak in unmuted microphone. If you're not being recognized, provide an obvious visual indicator. If you're participating with something with a webcam, such as raising your hand or waving at the camera, your microphone will be remuted after you've spoken. And all votes by the council because of the nature of the meetings will need to be by roll call. Now, if you are participating on a computer or handheld device, you raise your hand on your PC. If you go down to your toolbar along the bottom, there'll be a section that says participants. If you click on that, it'll open up a sidebar and there'll be a raise your hand button. If you're on a tablet or using a phone, similarly along the bottom of your screen, there'll be a more section with three little dots. If you click on that, there will be a raise your hand option. Now, if you're on your phone, there is a way for you in participating by a phone call, there is a way for you to raise your hand as well. You can press star nine on your phone to raise your hand and then staff can call on you. Typically, we'll handle phone numbers after we've handled individuals, but currently looking at our attendees this evening, we don't have any phone-in callers at this point. So at this point, Mr. Mayor, if you'd like to call a meeting to order.
Perfect. Well, let's call the meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic under which it stands. One nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, any changes to the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I do not have any changes to the agenda this evening.
Yeah. Any motions to adopt the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Josh, a second by Kate. Bryce, you want to go first? Amanda?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
And Josh?
Aye.
All vote aye as well. Agenda is adopted. Presentations, proclamations, and acknowledgements, we have none, so we'll jump into public comment. Um, let's see. We'll open it up to public comment. Is Matt on the? Matt, Matt, are you on?
Yes, I am.
From the chamber?
Yep.
Hey, Matt.
Hi, how's it going?
Good, how are you?
Pretty good.
Good. You have a chamber update, huh?
Yeah, so I'm was newly appointed on the board and I'm the CCEC representative for the chamber. And I'll be given monthly reports to the council. Don't have a whole lot to report this week or this month since I just had the meeting the other day and it was my first one. But we did have elections on Tuesday and for the positions and same as last year. We have Josh Melwitz as the president, Gordon Duel as the vice president, Karen Ramola as a secretary, and Tim Soduski as a treasurer. And that's pretty much all I got for you.
Appreciate it, Matt. Thanks so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Thanks.
Commissioner Wolf, you're on with us.
I am on. Hello, everybody. Mr. Mayor, council members, everybody, Tom Wolf County Commissioner, a couple of things here. Our building's progressing pretty good, our new building there, and so we're hoping to move in a bunch of people on first part of April. Part of that is going to be our spot where the county board meets, and you guys were there a year, a year and a half ago. They're going to remodel that, so we're not even going to meet in our board chambers probably till after December. We're going to be online. So everything will be Skype, which is, which is nice to have. We're getting ready to do our road projects. Credit River that used to be a township is now a city. And they got that okay on January twenty ninth. And so now we have eight cities again, and they're going to have elections on May eleventh. So they will have a city council, a mayor, and four council members. We're getting the vaccinations as quick as we can get those things in. They're going in people's arms and you know, right now it's, I talked to our public health nurse yesterday and it's tough getting them. I think we're only going to get three hundred of them either end of this week or beginning next weekend. Boy, three hundred isn't, doesn't go a long way when you need two shots per person, so anyhow, we're hoping that picks up here and we can get that clicking a little bit faster and hopefully by end of summer, get everybody. So that's all I have tonight unless anyone has any questions.
Anyone have any questions for Commissioner Wolf? All right, Tom, appreciate it as always.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on tonight that would like to speak under public comment?
If you could, please raise your hand virtually or make a motion towards the camera and we'll try and take you in order if you have anything to speak on. I'm looking through our attendees this evening.
I know there, while we're waiting, I know there's some, there's some conversation over a potential project in the Woodcrest, connecting the Woodcrest and Winrose neighborhoods. That's not an item we're looking to, we're going to be taking action on, but I know I made some comments out there that if people wanted to speak, this is an opportunity. So just call one last time. Is there anyone that cares to speak under public comment? One, twice. All right, well, well, in that case, we'll close public comment.
Mr. Mayor, on that item that you mentioned, the capital improvement plan and projects they're in, we will be publishing next Thursday, the public hearing for that. That will be on March eleventh. That meeting will start at six o'clock PM.
Appreciate it, Tom. Okay, well, we'll move on to consent agenda then. Does anybody have any items on consent that they have questions about or would like polled? Any motions are welcome.
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Second.
Motion, motion by Kate, a second by Bryce?
Yep.
Okay. All right, Josh, you go first.
Aye.
All vote aye as well. Amanda?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Bryce?
Aye.
All right, consent agenda passes. All right, next item is, well, we don't have any public hearings tonight, so next item is a closed meeting.
Mr. Mayor, we will be having a closed meeting pursuant to Minnesota State Statute thirteen D point zero five subdivision three C three to discuss the offer for purchase of the real property located at six forty-one Main Street. At this point, I would ask anybody in the meeting who is not staff or a consultant to please log out of the meeting. You can log right back in, but that will put you into the waiting room and we'll let you back into the meeting if you want to hang around after the closed session is completed. That may, could be anywhere from ten minutes to a half hour-ish depending on the length of discussion that the council has. And then we'll come back into general business and finish out the rest of the meeting.
And do we need a motion to close the meeting?
We do, Mr. Mayor.
Motion to close meeting.
It's a motion by Kate, second by Josh. Bryce, you want to vote first?
Aye.
Amanda?
Aye.
All vote aye as well. Kate?
Aye.
And Josh?
Aye.
Okay, I think.
Passes, we'll close the meeting.
Mr. Mayor, for the members of the public that are joining us, the city council is coming out of a closed meeting. The meeting was closed pursuant to Minnesota State Statute thirteen D point zero five subdivision three C three to discuss the offer for purchase of the real property located at six forty-one Main Street during the closed meeting, the council held discussion, but actually took no specific actions. At this time, Renee Christensen, our community development specialist, will provide the presentation on that item. Renee, if you'd like to share your screen.
Okay, everybody see my screen? Okay, can you see the note screen still, or can you just see the presentation screen?
Oh, we can see the note screen as well.
Okay. Um, I think I'm just going to use this screen. Okay, so, thank you, Tom. The this agenda item is to discuss the potential purchase of real property located at six forty-one Main Street. In two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight, the city council at the time authorized a facilities plan, which is, was an evaluation of future location for public facilities such as police station, fire station, basically a city campus. There were several alternate or various locations that were evaluated. And the area surrounding city hall was identified as the preferred location for a future city hall campus. And that plan identified a campus of approximately twenty acres. And that twenty acres is the area that surrounds the existing city hall. So in this southwest corner of the red box here is the existing city hall campus with County Road Two. You can see the, the plan at the time identified property all the way up to James Parkway and going east and down to County Road Two. So again, the master, master plan may include city hall, police station, fire station, park area, and a potential community center at some point in the future. The facilities plan was adopted by the city council in two thousand and eight and has been used as a guiding document since that time. Again, the property is immediate, the property that we're discussing today is outlined in red here in relation to the overall city campus that was identified, which is shown in green here in the green box. Staff began dialogue with the real estate broker representing the property in two thousand and nineteen. And the property has been on the mark, on the MLS on and off since that time. This is just aerial photograph that shows the existing city offices, fire station, the police station, salt shed, and then the subject property here, which is fairly heavily wooded. This slide shows the property with contours on. There is some topography on the property, the existing city hall site is at a lower elevation. There is a knoll that's approximately thirty feet higher than the city hall campus. There's very likely a wetland area on the northeast corner of the property. Just looking at the land use and how the city has the property guided, it's guided in our comprehensive plan to what we call town center. That land use designation allows a variety of commercial or high-density residential land uses. Some basic information about the property, it's approximately five point four acres. There is an existing home on the property and a detached garage that was constructed in the early nineteen hundreds. There's also an existing pole barn that is approximately forty by forty-five that was constructed using agricultural building codes. And staff does consider both, all the buildings on the property tear downs. So essentially would propose adding this to the city campus to the value of the land. These are just some photographs, graphs of the existing home. The existing detached garage. Shed. And the pole barn that is closest to the fire station. So the benefits of acquiring the property, again, that it is part of an identified municipal campus. There's a current opportunity, there's a willing seller and the property is listed on the MLS. If somebody else were to purchase the property, the opportunity may not be available, available again to the city for many years, if at all. It could require condemnation if we don't purchase it outright at this time. The property, not purchasing the property is a barrier to the campus property to the north. And the city facility that are the land that the city hall is on today is at capacity. We cannot extend, expand the building beyond its current size or the parking lot. This slide shows the existing city campus on the left. There is a wooded area on the northwest side of the existing city campus that is low or wetland area. And then you can see the, the rest of the site is at capacity. Any future expansion triggers stormwater requirements that we can't meet on the existing, existing site. And then here on the right, there is, because the subject property that we're discussing is L-shaped. There's a strip of land located between this property and any property to the north. So it really is a barrier to any future expansion of the city hall. The city has, our city staff at the direction of the city council in January has negotiated a purchase agreement. The terms that I'm outlining are basically our offer to the owner. And the offer is as follows, the proposed purchase price of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Proposed closing date of June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one. This would be contingent upon financing. The city does not have cash reserves to purchase the property. We would be purchasing the property and the building in an as-is condition. Taxes would be prorated to the date of closing. The property owner would be allowed to stay in the home for up to two years, including use of the garage and the shed through a lease agreement that is included in the city council packet. The city would be able to utilize the balance of the property provided it would not interfere with the occupants' access to the buildings. The, they would be leasing the property in an as-is condition. The city would not be making any repairs or improvements to the property. The property owner or lease, leasing would be responsible for all repairs and maintenance of the structure during that period. They would be allowed to salvage certain items from the home. They would be required to pay for all utilities during any period they lease the home. They would be required to obtain renters liability insurance. And the city would hold twenty thousand dollars in escrow to guarantee removal of personal property from the premises. Or that would be held by a title company. Staff would recommend bonding for the acquisition in two thousand and twenty-one in conjunction with the interchange utility extension project. The annual debt service would range between thirty and thirty-four thousand dollars, assuming a twenty-year term in recently estimated rates by the city's financial advisor. So the city council action being requested tonight would be to approve the purchase agreement for six forty-one Main Street and authorize the mayor and city administrator to execute the documents that are included in the council packet that are part of the purchase agreement and lease agreement. And then direct staff to include the property acquisition in the city's capital improvement plan, which is required for financing. Concludes my presentation.
All right, thanks, Renee. City council, we've had two closed meetings talking about this. We've, going back much further, this has been a topic of conversation. You know, I'll, I know I stated my opinion on this in the closed meeting session, but to be on record with it. I can't support this. We do not need to be spending this money right now and having a tax impact on our taxpayers. We don't have an immediate need for this. While I will agree that we at some point will do need to expand city hall, I think we're spending money before we're seeing, before we're seeing it come in. And, and lastly, I just don't feel we should be in the landlord business, so. With that, I'll shut up. And anyone else care to comment publicly?
I'll just say that I agree with you, Joe.
Thank you. Well, if we, if there's no more discussion that anyone wants to have on this, then we would need to call for a vote, correct? Because I don't know if there's a resolution that we need to have.
That would be correct, Mr. Mayor. At this point, we would need a vote. It could be as simple as a motion to approve the staff recommended or requested actions, which would include everything you see on your screen now.
Okay. Anyone want to make that motion? Was that Bryce?
Yes.
A motion by Bryce? A second by Kate? Any more discussion before we vote? Josh?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Bryce?
Aye.
Amanda?
No.
All vote no as well. Motion passes three-two. Okay, on to reports.
Give me one second here, Mr. Mayor. So under reports tonight, we have three items. First item is council meeting format. Does the council have any desire to move from our current format for public meetings, which is virtual meetings such as we're having this evening?
Anyone feel we should change things up or continue as is for another couple of seconds?
We're almost there.
Yep.
Okay, not hearing any further direction. We'll soon continue forward. The other thing is we're looking for a council representative on our police officer interview panel. We like to include a council member as a representative of a non-technical member of the, the general public to assist with that process in our second round of interviews. So we would be looking for the council to appoint somebody to assist us with that interview process. Right now, if you recall from the staff report under consent agenda authorizing the hire, we actually would not need that person's services for, you know, a month and a half. But it's nice to know who it is for purposes of scheduling those interview times. So if you could make that appointment, it'd be greatly appreciated.
I would be interested.
Former police officer.
I would be very interested.
You'd be very interested, Amanda, did I hear you're interested as well?
I am, but given Bryce's experience in the field, I am fine with Bryce taking that.
Kate, yeah, I mean, we could, we could have another vote.
I was involved in it last time. I say, let's give somebody else a turn.
Yeah, Josh, do you have any feedback?
Sounds good to me. I mean, Bryce was very interested, Amanda was just interested, so I would say Bryce.
Do I get any say in this, who I want?
Absolutely not.
I just didn't think I was going to win the battle.
All right, sounds like Bryce is.
So the last item.
Amanda, you okay with Bryce? Go ahead, Tom.
Oh, I was just going to say last item under reports is we have the fourth quarter financial report. If you don't have any specific questions, this is consistent with what we expected for the end of the year. Probably the most notable item is under revenues, under utilities. You'll note that we didn't have a plat, we had budgeted for having at least one modest-sized plat coming in this year. That did not happen. So that was under budget. Obviously, that'll be adjusted for. And in the long term, with regards to the health of funds, is adjusted for if you have that made up over the next, you know, several years. So outside of that, there wasn't anything that the council hasn't already seen coming from previous quarterly reports. So I don't plan on giving a presentation, so I'll stand for questions.
Anyone have any questions at all or comments? All right, I think we're good then. Public works.
Good evening. I have nothing to add, but I'm here in case anybody has any questions.
I have a request.
Okay.
Can the, the last sentence of your report, I wanted to check to switch it up.
Okay.
Excellent job, but.
I can, I can do that.
That is all.
Any other, any other comments or feedback for questions? I appreciate all you guys do, Corey.
Thank you.
All right, police report. Brady?
Good evening. Just a couple of points. One, all the officers that chose to get the COVID vaccine have now been vaccinated with both their first and their second vaccine shots. So they should be up and running. Very interesting note, I happened to give blood a week after my first shot and just found out this week that I had a very high antigen count just within one week of my shot. So just kind of an interesting note for people that it, it shows up in your blood right away for the vaccine. So we did all get the Moderna. And then another very interesting point for the safety of our department and, and person power. CDC stated today that if an individual has completed both their first and their second vaccine, that they do not have to quarantine if they come into a firsthand exposure with somebody with confirmed COVID. So might not seem like a lot, but that can really save our staff. Because as you do know, we do go on medicals and calls where we're exposed quite a bit. So it is nice that we don't have to quarantine and lose an officer for two weeks and have to pay a lot of overtime. So that's one quick thing about the COVID. So that's one quick thing about the COVID. And then another thing, I kind of put my report that we have, and all of you have or will get soon, challenge coin program for the police department. And we're going to be working to try to get a couple candidates that I have in mind for the challenge coin. Those little metal coins that we have. When a citizen that we encounter goes above and beyond helping an officer out, helping another person out on a call. Each officer's been given a challenge coin to hand out to those citizens. And then what they'll do is they'll go ahead, write me an email what that citizen did. Hopefully, we can get a picture with them and then we'll be featuring that on our Facebook or newsletters. Joe's got one right there. It's a very cool, collectible grade coin made of solid gold. No, just kidding on that last part. But they're really neat and we're very excited. We appreciate the city being able to get that program started. Most of the departments have that type of coin, so right now they're not for sale. They're very collectible, they're only given to people as they go above and beyond in the community. Other than that, there's been an uptick in fraud calls. Either people calling or trying to solicit personal information just like to remind anybody that's listening, or if you have any family and friends, they are targeting the elderly. So if you have family members or anybody, if they're ever called and asked to give their personal information out, please advise them not to. We've seen an uptick in that lately. So other than that, I'm open for questions if anybody has any.
Anyone have any questions or anything for Brady?
All right, thank you, council, mayor.
Appreciate it. Fire Department hiring firefighters.
So as council is aware, we did not go out for hiring of firefighters last year because the firefighter certification classes were not offered because of COVID. It is our understanding that that is likely this year, although that decision has not been made final nor the timing of the classes. So it would be our attempt that if that gets confirmed, we would move forward with the hiring process, posting for positions and hopefully getting some candidates that we can bring on board. If it doesn't, we probably will sit another year without posting for it. Right now, our current staffing in the department is 27, which is the higher end of our norm. We know we do have some pending retirements coming down the road, but we don't think it's within the immediate future. So I think we would be okay for another year. But I just wanted to make council aware of that occasionally, when are you posting again, when are you posting again, et cetera? The other item, which I just got some information on today and after I prepared this presentation, as Kate will confirm, the fire relief had a very good year with regards to their investments. And as a result of their good financial year, despite fundraising limitations, they did very well and they will be looking for a substantial increase in the pension benefit based on the guidelines we've outlined in the MOU. I believe we'll be looking at something over $11,000 per year of service at this point, which will put them up in the very top associations within the state of Minnesota. More to come on that, probably March, we'll be bringing that as an action item back to council.
Thanks, Tom, engineering.
Good evening, mayor and council, I have no report, but I will be happy to sit for questions.
Anyone have any questions for Rich? All right, appreciate it, Rich. Community development.
So we have a few items, we have community development updates, the draft planning commission minutes and the 2021 planning commission goals. Renee, did you have a presentation that you are going to be giving on any of these items?
I do not have a presentation. If the council has any questions, the only item I really wanted to point out in the community development updates was the applicant, our concept plan application for the multifamily housing development that was received and business subsidy application. And the planning commission will be reviewing the concept plan for this multifamily housing project on February 23rd. And again, it's not an official application, it's just to get preliminary feedback from the planning commission at this point, but still quite a big project for the city. If anybody has any questions about anything else, I'd be happy to take them.
Thanks, Renee. You have anything, Renee?
Thank you.
Parks and Rec?
Hello, good evening. Yeah, tonight is our first online Twitter program. We're having a magic show and I have magically reappeared to give the report here. Kevin is monitoring that and tells me that we had 30 kits taken out. So kids are learning some magic, I'm not sure how many are actually there, but magician's pretty good. And my likeness is just about perfect when he transported me over here. But first time we've ever had one online, so and so far, all the technical aspects have worked well. And when I leave here, I'll magically reappear at the magic show again. So if you have any questions on the Parks and Rec update, I'd be happy to answer.
Anyone have any questions for Mark? Appreciate the work you put into this.
It'll, it's gonna be a lot of fun, I think, here, kids seem to be enjoying it.
Yeah. All right, CCEC?
Linda?
I do know
Go ahead, Amanda.
We haven't met next Tuesday to finalize the Easter drive-through. More to come on that.
Other committee reports, scale. Tomorrow is the scale meeting, if you can make it, should be interesting. Two, well, three things that I'll mention that will come up in tomorrow's scale meeting. Commissioner Wolf talked briefly about it, but we are gonna get a general update on vaccination rollout, how that's going. Scott County. I, I don't know if there's any, gonna be any new earth-shattering news necessarily out of it, but there's something good to, have to get a good update at one point. There is gonna be a presentation on the transportation sales tax. And this is a half-cent sales tax that the proceeds for those, from those funds go to road improvements throughout the county. We have, well, I think we have two projects on the list, but really only one in the near future, and that would be the 35 to interchange rebuild. That original tax had a sunset on it, which is about the sunset. So many in the county are very interested in trying to get that renewed for another term, I don't know if it's another seven years or how exactly that works, but it would be a good presentation if you're interested to check out. I don't like seeing, well, I'll save my commentary for another time. And then lastly, we'll be doing elections for officers. My reign of terror as chair is coming to a close after tomorrow's meeting, so. Anyway, that's a scale update that I have. That includes executive committee, so service delivery.
I have no new updates, we haven't met since our last meeting, Mr. Mayor.
Unified Transit Steering Committee, we haven't met that one either since last meeting, so. MBTA?
We have not met since the last meeting, we meet next week, so I've got nothing.
I-35?
We met this morning, the next meeting is actually gonna be pushed up to the 25th, so we're gonna have two meetings in February and no meetings in March. By March, there should be the joint powers agreement finalized, so become an official governing body, which is good. And then as far as some of the projects, they got an update on the orange line and that is the line from downtown to Burnsville, which is slated to be completely open by end of this year.
We've already had a Chamber of Commerce speak, so we'll move around the discussion by council. Not the motion to adjourn, well.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion by Bryce, second by Kate. Josh?
Aye.
Amanda?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Bryce?
Aye.
Well, I as well, meeting adjourned, thanks everyone, have a great night.